In persistent to Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero two, the public body has determined that the committee of the whole will not be able to hold the meeting in person due to the pandemic COVID nineteen. Persistent to Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero two one, the committee of a whole will be holding the meeting via telephone or by using Zoom. The public is not in attendance today. I would like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all council members are present. Councilman Burgley, you are on as well, correct?
That is correct, that is correct. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any public comment at this time?
Are you talking to me again?
Yeah, I can hear you. I can, I'm assuming there's a little bit of a lag here, so I'm probably gonna pause if I'm looking for an answer. Let's move on to the committee meeting items. We'll go with E one liquor store updates, and John is in attendance.
Okay, so I'll go over the last few months, the months of August through October. Our gross profit was twenty seven point two three. Sales during the same timeframe have been continually above thirty percent. Sales have been over three hundred thousand every month since March. Obviously, the pandemic, people are drinking more, so we've been planning for that every month and doing well with that. Some follow up with my, I had a October seventh MMBA Zoom board meeting. I completed my six years on the MMBA Board of Directors, five years as Vice President of the MMBA, developed some great relationships with many stores. However, my time as Director is completed. I will still be part of the Strategic Planning Committee for the MMBA, so I have stores that report to me, and if the MMBA needs me for anything, they will pay for any travel expenses to help out stores if I'm called upon. Some of the other things are, I have one board meeting a year, and then, in fact, I had a Zoom call today with Miller Coors introducing new products, so I'm still a part of that group, so I do, I do follow up with them on that stuff. So that's that. So every year in November, I do this. I go over personal goals for the next year and the continuation of this year, so some of these things I do repeat year after year, so you'll hear some of them over and over again, but they're just things that I constantly work on, like continuing to work through wines, liquors, mix that are not selling or out of stock, and introduce new lines that have better movement, pull up movement reports to weed out the slow sellers, ongoing process, introduce many new lines this year. With the can shortage, it's constant, especially in the beer. Beer and liquor categories have been changing out a lot of products constantly, and then the old ones come back, and so we keep working through that, but we've been doing a pretty good job of making sure our shelves are full for those empty spots. So we plan on having a larger online presence and get more involved with promotion and online email blasts. Obviously, keep a consistent gross profit above twenty four percent we have and continue to monitor this all the time. We're consistently over twenty seven is kind of where we've been at. Plan to conduct online ordering for curbside pickup abilities for our future location, so we plan on doing this two to three months before, so that we get the swing of it and see how that goes. We do do curbside now, people just call in, but we want to get the online ordering going so that we know how it works and don't have any glitches in the near future for that. Work with committee on a fall holiday tasting events, obviously this year we didn't. Doing it in store on the three Thursdays in October, obviously post COVID, so hopefully next year we'll be able to do tastings. Conduct a food and wine pairing for employees post COVID again. Develop holiday focused wine. I do this every year for employees to help customers with food and wine pairings during the holidays. It truly helps them decide what's good with what, so. Plan on utilizing beer tastings with breweries to help promote local craft brews again post COVID. In fact, no suppliers are willing to do tastings, by the way, so just so you're aware of that because of COVID. And then plan and direct full time department responsibilities, utilizing department assignments for our two full time people, so I told them when the new store happens, I'm gonna give them assigned things to do, so. Some additional things I'd propose, continue to run our Scotsman every month for 2021. We do an ad every month. Believe this helps sales for us, offering a competitive price, plus the register screens and Facebook, we help advertise the ad as well. And then continue the Facebook page for the liquor store with some boosting opportunities for next year. And then, old business, this actually, I just totaled this up today, the food drive we generate in two hundred and fifty eight dollars in cash, so that's the best food drive we've ever had, so, which goes right to family pathways at Iscany County, so I do that every year in October.
Say, John, when you're up here, how's your, how's the Facebook response to that been?
It's actually really good. I guess the main focus for us has been hiring people, and Katie would probably have to concur with me on that. We get a lot of applicants off of that. We get a lot of followings because we can see how many people follow our posts, and Keith seems to keep up really good with that and putting new items out, and things that we have limited supply, like Surly has the darkness right now, and so we try to keep up with that. Facebook has really helped, it truly has.
So I mean, so you would say that it's something you want to continue to do?
Definitely.
I, the only reason I bring this up is because it was for years, it was brought up prior to when you were allowed to do it, to do it, and it was always shot down, and that is the only reason I bring it up, because I wanted to know, you know, how it's been working for you.
And I think, Councilman Lundine, I think the main focus was the backlash that we could get, so we are filtering that, so we don't get that, so that, that was the main thing that we were concerned with.
I think every department had police, liquor store, city administrator. I think sitting down with the Wyoming Police Chief was remarkable. I think he gave us a lot of input on that, and I think we all soaked it in very well, I think, and to have it filtered and, and to watch it the way we're doing, I think it's, we did it the right way and it's working the right way.
I agree with you. We really, I don't see any of that, so it's been nice.
Good, 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 good.
I do know there's a lot of people that are actually not, it's hard to close your Facebook account, but they're basically just shutting it down, they're not using it because people use it wrong.
Correct.
Facebook is a, is a fabulous social media grabber, looker, if it's used right, you know. I don't post anything political because my political beliefs over a friend of mine's has caused arguments.
Sure.
And I, so I don't post anything political because I don't want to be put in that position, even though I don't agree with them, but I also agree that they're allowed, they're entitled to their opinion as well as I am, but, and that's the problem, I think, with a lot of the social media forums, is, is people are using it wrong. I mean, you know, people say, I post what I had for dinner, or, you know, something like that. I could care less, but yet again, it's also a great way to find out that something has happened, you know, is like when my mother passed away, I posted it because there's a lot of my friends that knew them and my parents, and they, you know, my phone blew off the wall because they're just constantly calling me. It was a good way to, to showing people that that happened, or, you know, so social media gets used wrong, and, and that's the problem, so it's good to see that it's being, you know, it's working for you. If somebody's got a problem, come to you and talk about it instead of airing your dirty laundry on, online, you know.
And they, they have no chance of doing that on our Facebook page, so that's a good thing, so. And I agree with you, rather than come to me, so, works a lot better that way, so.
What do they call those trolls?
Trolls, yes.
Yeah. So we don't get no trolls because we filtered it properly. It was, I mean, not only a smart department head in the city of Wyoming, but he was pretty knowledgeable on that Facebook stuff. I mean, that helped us tremendously, and we didn't know nothing, we walked into it blind. But it worked, so.
Yep.
Kudos, kudos to you guys, every one of you, for maintaining it as well as you do. I watch yours like a hawk, so does my wife, because I think that's her second home, but as, everybody's like, what? My wife partakes in, you know, bringing money back to the city in that sense. Not me, I quit ten years ago. I'm with Steve. We just hang out and smoke cigars, that's all we do.
We need a smoke shop in Iscany.
We do need one of those, though.
Working, I'm working on that.
Right next to the liquor store, the new one. Any questions or comments for?
John, you're doing a great job as usual. I'm glad to see you keeping the numbers up. It's, it's always hard, you know, that's, that's, you know, Councilman Gordon, you know, he says the same thing, you know, you don't agree with the city having a municipal liquor store, but it puts a huge amount of money into the city, and I think he's doing a great job by doing that. I mean, you know, I mean, it'd be different if we allowed other businesses to come and we fought them with their business, but if we don't allow them to do it, then there's no way to fight them, you know? I mean, I'm all for free capitalism, but the liquor store's been doing a huge, been doing a huge asset to the city for many, many, many years, so, kudos to you, John.
So if you're not being on the MMBA anymore, you're not gonna do it at all?
So what, what it is, is you get two, three year terms max, so I had two, three year terms, and once I hit my sixth year, then you have to come off for at least a year, which, you know, this'll work out good, because in the next year.
You got a lot ahead of you, John.
I'll be busy, so, yes.
You'll be very busy.
Yes.
One thing I was just thinking about, have you ever looked into doing like a rewards program at all, and?
So we do, they do do rewards programs that do work really well, and I, I do have that through my software if I want to do that. I think that would be a great thing to do for the new store.
Yeah.
I truly, I agree with you. Some do like a point system where you hit a certain number of points and then, which is dollars, then you, you can get like five bucks towards something.
Right.
So I definitely agree with you, I'd love to do that in the near future, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of that you can kind of utilize like text marketing and stuff like that through that system, too, so.
Yep.
You know, and I can kind of retain customers if they haven't been there for thirty days or sixty days, we can send them a kind of an automatic, you know, deal, that kind of thing, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that'd be something, like you said, when the new store goes, that'd be maybe a good thing to do.
No, I agree with you, we've, we've been tossing it around, my assistants and I have said it'd be a good idea, and I can use other stores in the municipal realm that actually have the same software, they use it and have different options, so we'll throw out those options when we get to that point, so.
Sure.
What we want to do.
I know that my apprentice has gone into liquor store over here, when we came home, he stopped to pick up stuff, and he did complain that your, your credit card machine wasn't work, wouldn't read his card, and, and I said, obviously, you know, it's, it's not just machine, it's card, and it's just whatever, but he did say that the liquor store that he normally goes to, he lives in Zimmerman, they have an award, you know, awards program.
Yeah.
And he was kind of briefly discussing it with me, and you're obviously aware of it, so, and I think that would be a good thing.
Yep.
And that would, especially in the new location, that would probably get a lot of repeat customers that are driving through.
It would boost us, definitely, yeah, I think it would, especially locals, so, kind of a reward to keep shopping there, it sounds great to me, so, everyone's doing it nowadays anyways, so.
Any other questions for your, John?
Have you experienced anybody coming in that doesn't normally, buying in bulk, buying?
I do have, I would have to say that we've had a lot of curbside, that's, some people that shop at Elk River and said they're terrible at taking care of us, and we'd like to come to you, so I've got, I can say that I've gained a lot from some of the other stores that can't keep up with the demands, and then I have a lot of people that, there's certain brands like Twisted Tea, been getting it, not getting it, getting it, not getting it, but my supplier's been very aware of when they do, and then she just auto sends it to me, so a lot of liquor stores around us are not getting it, so I'm getting repeat people on that, so it kind of helps when you, you can get the products and nobody else can, so, that's a good thing.
I do know, Councilman Coulson, I was actually, now that that's mentioned, I was in Target Saturday, and a gentleman approached me, obviously recognized me, and commented to, commented to me that he lives in North Branch, and his liquor store's horrible, so he comes to John, and he does that because John takes care of him, and if there's something that John doesn't have, John's willing to get it for him, et cetera. He, he wanted to compliment me on, your liquor store manager's phenomenal there, and I'm just, I'm just gonna come to you, you know, a little bit of a drive, but it's good scenery, as he chuckled and, and walked away, but it was good to hear, so.
Definitely.
You know, and as long as, I mean, now, he's not in the MMBA no more, so he's got more time to focus, so this, this should get even better, I'm excited now. This is awesome, good question, Councilman Gordon, I like that, a rewards program, I think that'd be phenomenal.
I know my wife, wife and daughter, they always talk about their Hawaii wine, you know, which one she orders, it's the Hawaii wine, and it's just, but, you know, and I mean, she, when she orders, she orders a case from me at a time.
Yep.
Better find a Hawaii contact, John.
Yeah, right.
That's Costco.
Now, now I can actually keep it on the shelf when I, when I'll have room for it, so.
Yeah, Costco is where we actually found it in Hawaii.
Ah.
That's where I came across it, so.
There's a Costco in Hawaii?
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Yep, that's the only place we shop. It's cheaper for gas and everything.
I didn't know that island was big enough to have a Costco on it.
They got a Sam's Club in Oahu, so.
Holy. All right, any other questions? None. John, you do a phenomenal job, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's move on to E two, the proposed 2021 fee schedule changes. Mr. Becker, it is great to see you, sir. Star six, there we go.
Well, it's good to be here. Easiest thing to do is just simply ask if we have any questions. Biggest changes were, that we've discussed on this that I can recall would be the, the deck permits and the lower level finishes. We've moved those down to the, just that flat fee, the deck is now three hundred bucks, basement finishes, three hundred bucks as well.
Awesome.
That's nice to hear. It's just, I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, council members, but I, I think we just want to be a little more resident friendly with these fees, I mean, we understand we have to cover our overhead costs, but we don't need to, to be a capitalist here on ordinance fees.
I mean, I, I get, you know, you gotta have permit fees, but like you said, it's, we have so many new homes in Iscany that don't have finished basements and don't have decks. Well, all they're doing is increasing the value of their property by putting on a deck, and if that deck permit's a thousand bucks, they're looking at, no, I'm not building it. You know, my neighbor wanted to put a fence in, and he waited till he had time to do it, well, now the material went up, that he was gonna do it himself, the material cost him more than it would have been if he would have hired the company originally that gave him a price on it. So, you know, with building materials going up and up and up, we don't need to start gouging these people, let's let them, let's let them get those basements done, let's let them get those decks done. Let's, it's all it's gonna do is increase the property values of all our properties, all of ours.
I wholeheartedly agree. Do you have any questions for Mr. Becker, council members? I'm kind of skimming through this, I looked over it today.
I would like to add, council members, that, or mayor council, that we did include the peeler permits and their investigation fee, as well, as well as administrative permits for nonprofits are at no charge. That's something that was discussed last year, or, no, not last year, actually, what's it last year?
I think it was early this.
It was earlier this year, yeah.
Anyway, we discussed that when we had redone that ordinance and made revisions to it. We have now put that into the fee schedule. The other thing that we had in there is for all of our boards and commissions, the members received twenty five dollars for attending those, those were never in the fee schedule, and it is best practice to have those included. Council member pays in our city code in chapter eight, however, the boards, what they get for a, for DM was not in there, so that's now, that's in the fee schedule now. No changes to those, but they're now included, so the public can see that.
I guess, I mean, Mr. Becker, you, you've paid close attention to this, Chief Myers, you did as well. Is there anything in here that you feel that need to be changed, or this council's gonna read and find later and want to change? I mean.
A lot, a lot of the changes in here are housekeeping type changes, you know, outside of some of the, some of the items that we've already kind of touched on that have drawn a little more attention in the past. The only other one that I think I should point out that is a little bigger change would be the change on the escrows for development agreements. We've had an ongoing problem with escrows for development agreements being so low that we are running through the entire escrow in the first month, and after that invoicing it out, invoicing it out, invoicing it out, month after month after month. So there is an up, sizable uptick on, on the escrow amount, and for a lot of the larger developments, think about legacy pines, those kinds of things, even a ten thousand dollar escrow is just not gonna cover the whole thing. We're still gonna end up invoicing, but it moves us a little more toward the middle on where we would expect the actual cost to be.
G.
Section G under planning and zoning, yep.
Getting way too many to get to page ten.
Do you feel that's comfortable now, Mr. Becker?
I'm okay with it. I mean, it, I mean, there's, we're definitely too close to the margin if, if, if the escrows as they currently stand are simply getting burned through in the first month or two months, and then we're having to invoice everything else out, that's fine, we'll get our money back because we never have to issue that, that CO until we actually get paid on all those items, so that we're not incurring cost on behalf of the developer, but when everybody involved understands that, you know, twenty five hundred bucks isn't gonna cut it, we may as well move closer to the middle on that one.
And you know that that is refundable if it is not spent, they get it back?
Yeah, that's a good reminder, escrow amounts always go back, escrows are never ever kept by the city. They cover city costs and that's it, and at the end of the project, if, if there's money left over, it goes back to the escrow owner.
And here, I see you got, what, two hundred and forty if you want to add a second meter in your house? Water meter?
So that would include the secondary meter that I recommended, right, for the irrigation meter? Mr. Becker, remember we had that discussion?
Yeah, if a person wanted to go that route, we don't have a lot of those, a lot of people are just utilizing that, that average, that winter average, but, you know, people, people certainly can have another meter for irrigation if they'd like. A lot of people just take that, that winter average or the thirty five hundred average.
The reason for the reduction of the meter cost is due to us switching over to a new meters, the new type of meter, so it's significantly less.
Speaking of that, we got all that done now, right? I think you were asking me, weren't you, Councilman Gordon, about, did we order all the new meters, or?
Yeah, it might have been, couple, like a month ago, or a couple weeks ago, maybe.
I'm a little slow, you know, I.
The meters are coming in now because the other ones we were no longer, you know, cheaper, so as the onesy twosies are coming in, and then it's put into the capital plan to do the full changeover in a few years.
And there was something about the software update or something, I think that was what we discussed.
Yeah, we got all that in line now, too?
Yep.
We got all the software for the new guy coming in the thirtieth, too?
It's not, we don't have yet. Their backlog is coming.
Go figure.
So we'll have it by the time they actually become official.
He'll be ready to go. Good planning, whoever planned that.
I don't know if Ms. Wood told you, Sheila, be thankful we didn't hire that first guy.
Oh, I know.
No, I can give you some firsthand experience with him.
Explain that, talk about that after the meeting.
Yeah.
I'm okay with everything here, I think this looks pretty good.
Yep, I agree.
Because the deck permit and basement stuff, that used to all be a flat fee, and then it was the plan fee, and then it was a percentage of it, right, so this was a lot better.
It was a whole hoopla mess.
Yeah, right.
Plus, plus fifty five percent of the evaluation fee, plus the time review, now it'll be a flat fee.
Originally, if you did a basement finish, it was at least a thousand dollars for the permit, and then it was another thousand dollars for the deck.
Yeah.
So when you go to do this, you're spending twenty five, twenty five hundred bucks to do a deck and a basement.
Yeah, right, yeah.
The only question I'd like for a deck permit, there's some decks that, especially if you're doing it yourself, you know, you're talking a thousand bucks, so, you know, that's, you know, more like a ten by ten or twelve by twelve deck, so is, is that still, no matter what size deck it is, it's three hundred bucks? Because that's almost half the cost of a ten by ten deck, you know, twelve by twelve deck.
Going to a flat fee, that would be for all decks, no matter what size they are.
What's half the cost?
Three hundred dollars per minute.
Half the cost for what?
A deck.
Be another, so instead of a thousand dollar.
Oh, I was like, what are you talking, I just built a twenty by sixteen and it was way more than that.
No, I'm saying like a ten by ten or twelve by twelve, someone wants.
Yeah, it didn't matter, it's just three hundred dollars. Yeah, I got you now.
But the problem is, even though it's ten by ten, they still have to have the footings, they still have to have.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, so it, by doing this, it still would have been, it would have still been five, six, seven hundred dollars for debt permit before, so this is a lot better, so it's, it's huge.
Very much so. Now, I'm moving on here to.
Wait, does Councilmember Berkeley have something to say, I see that he's unmuted.
I was just curious, is there any confusion around that community center? Well, I was looking at the community center, and I'm, I'm not saying there is confusion, I'm just wondering if there is any, because, for example, cleaning fee's in there twice, and at the bottom, there's, there's different levels of, of renting on that community center. I mean, if you're not seeing any confusion, I'm, I'm not worried about it, but I'm just wondering if there is any.
I think that the reason why that the community center is listed in there so many times is because we, we charge a reduced rate for nonprofits, so we list that separately, and then we also charge a rate for if you're being a regular renter, which means that you're having a reoccurrence of your renting, so I think that's kind of why that looks so busy and a little complicated, but I do think that that is necessary.
Yeah, and the diff, the difference on the two cleaning fees is, is basically is if the renter is choosing to have us clean on their behalf, there's one, and if there is simply, they didn't choose ahead of time to have it cleaned, and they leave a damage, right, they've left it in poor condition, then that's a different fee. It's sort of the difference, if there's, if there's an arrangement ahead of time on cleaning is basically the difference between the two.
Okay, sounds good.
I got one question for you, Ms. Wood. Unity's park softball field usage, where you got non-resident and residents, what do you, are you doing anything for them for churches? I mean, the churches, when they do play, they're starving for fields to play on, and they don't have a lot of money involved, I mean, they don't have a lot of money involved in those things.
So to my knowledge, under my time, and I believe that it's operated the same way, because I've instructed that to Ms. Garvey, is most of the churches that use our fields have, have someone who live in town, so they always get the resident rate, as long as they're on there as an alternative person on the application.
I'd almost like to see if the churches did it, were using it, if they went out and helped maintain it by dragging it and whatever, you know, the field, which is huge, that's where the big cost comes in, and.
I really get that.
Well, but I mean, if they did that, you say, hey, you can use it for free, as long as you drag the fields when you're done, because I know when, when I was involved with church softball, we always drove those fields when we were done.
It actually is part of the agreement that when you rent it, whether you pay or not, I guess, that you do drag it, because then it saves on our public works time, plus then we're not having to go out there. I think we still have to go out there just to check on it, though, you know, because they don't typically do it. Good enough for where the next group comes in, it doesn't come from.
Chief Myers is three dollars per time at alcohol screening, is that enough?
Yeah, I mean, it's a matter of three minutes of time.
All you're doing is PVT in them, right?
Yeah, for example, we did one last week, and I had to pull up the fee schedule because I don't exactly remember what it was, but if you. Yeah, for example, we did one last week, and I had to pull up the fee schedule, cause I couldn't exactly remember what it was, but if you, let's say you have a alcohol sensor in your vehicle, and it comes back that you have alcohol in your system, it could affect your probation, but it's a, they can come into a PD and get a test, so they came in the test, and then all we do is write that PBT zero, 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 I mean, five minutes of our time, so I think it's sufficient.
Okay. Any other questions from the council on the fee schedule?
Not for me.
Uh, Councilmember Lindian, do you, uh, back to that unity ball field, do you wanna consider having a far further reduced rate for nonprofits? Or for, or, or how do you, just to wrap that up, do we want to change that? I mean, instead of, I would suggest instead of waiving the fee, if we wanted to make it less, maybe less, but not waiving it completely, cause there is a cost that the city occurs.
Yeah, especially if they play at night, I mean, we're paying electric bill, but, I don't know, I, I, yeah. Churches and nonprofits are such a double edged sword, because they're the ones that wanna use the things the most, but yet again, they're also part of this community and do a lot for this community. And that's kinda where I kinda have a hard time, when it's a nonprofit or a church organization, to try to gouge them, you know? But I, I, isn't it just up to me?
I don't know, $15 is a gouge, is it?
And that's for, typically, it's a whole, so like where a resident might go out there for a birthday party and rented, it's, what, 10 people? Couple of kid, you know, kid type, kid togethers. Uh, when the church groups rent it, it's actually full practices and games with like teams, two teams. So it's a little bit more, so to say, maintenance work for those groups than it is for actually like the residents who are just renting it out for like the day for their kids to play.
I think if it would be $50, then I, then I would agree with you, it's a gouge, Councilman.
It was, it used to be.
Yeah, but $15, that seems a little, a little better. I mean, I'm with you, I, I don't-
No, I mean, I understand that, but I mean, how much, let's be realistic, how much have they used this field? And, and the only ones that are probably using it are church groups.
I would say the majority is church groups, correct? And it is, um, first come, first served, and sometimes people do turn away, but from the years that I've been here, they work together and say, well, we'll do Monday, Thursday, and then the other group will take, you know, Thursday, Friday, or whatever. They work together and know, it's kind of the same couple of church groups that come in every year.
Yeah.
Then they just need to get competitive and say the loser pays the fee.
I guess it does add up, though, you're right. I mean, a $15, yeah, I mean, for the whole summer and stuff, that adds up, that can be a lot of money.
But it's just, it's just-
I was only thinking, you know, if you had a game every once in a while, but you're right, you gotta practice.
No, church, churches, in the summertime, I mean, they're scrambling for fields. I mean, they're, you know, like Faith Lutheran does not have an area for a ball field. So this is their, this, they've gone to other churches and used their fields on their off days because they don't have a home field, you know, um-
And we have, CICV has rented it before, too, because they've been short on fields. But roughly, it's around $500 to $600, depending on how many weeks they wanna go, how many, you know, two or three practices per week and how many weeks, but that's probably what I see.
You probably don't know the history on that field. Cambridge-Iceyany Softball Association built that field. And I know that for a fact, because I was there building it.
Iceyany, Cambridge Softball?
Yep. Iceyany Cambridge Softball Association built that field. Joey Malberg, Joey Malberg and I spent a lot of time out there building that field. I think the city did pay for the lights, but we did all the work. So, now you kinda know a little history in there, you see, it was city land, but it, and at that time, that was a premier field. Now, it's actually not good for adult softball, because the field's too short. So, yeah, you know, and I have used it in the past with the church, and I'm out there pulling sandbars up all the way around that thing. So it's kinda like it was a neglect, now this, I'm not saying this, this is not in the last few years, this is, you know, six, seven, eight years ago. It was rough, and the city wasn't putting anything into it. They weren't out there maintaining it, they went out and went on with the mower, and that was called a good. So-
I think just a couple of, two years ago is when we started really putting some money, we had budgeted Lime-Ag, we put some Lime-Ag out there, we remade the border.
Yep.
So it wasn't overgrown, I mean, we spent quite a bit of time.
But before that, it wasn't, and then we had Faith Lutheran Church come in, and they wanted to use a field, and it was 50 bucks for them to use it one time. And I just said, I finally just said, take it out of my council pay, I'll pay it, the church is using it for free, as far as I'm concerned. And I just stayed paid for it when they used it. That's why I brought it up that way, cause it was under big neglect. But I will tell you, the people from Faith Lutheran Church, the ones that do play are avid ball players, and they would drag the field. If they're, you know, made it note to them, they would do it. I, that's just, that's just my input, I mean-
And there's, there's trash, too, that needs to be picked up. Garbage bags that need be, or garbage cans that need to be emptied, things like that, too, that public works, that has to do with, correct? Over a whole summer, that-
And we are putting, we're budgeting for new church as well, so people have a place, because that's right there and not up to par.
And but then now, the next thing, you go on to that same question, what do the people pay to use a dog park? And you're picking up garbage there, and those are bags of dog crap. Which is just, as far as I'm concerned, 10 times worse than a garbage bag. So I mean, where do you wanna stop and where do you wanna start? I mean, that, you know, that's my point, is you're not charging them, and the dachshund, the dogs, and if people don't go up and clean up their gar, their dog's waste, somebody else is doing it. And they're not getting charged to use it.
Yeah, I think the difference with a dog park, I get your point, but I think the big difference there is anybody can go there at any time. It's not like a whole dog park is rented out and you can't go there for two hours.
No, but, and there's another thing, how many kids go out and play in, in, in the softball fields, then nothing ever gets said about it.
Well, you can, you can go out there without reserving it, but if someone comes and you have to serve it, then you get bumped out. It's kinda like our park shelters are the same way. But I do think if you, um, I, I hear what you're saying, and we definitely can, you know, change the fees, but I think that if it was, um, let's say, half that cost, you'd have them booked every single evening by a group, because it'd be one of the cheapest around, and then how do you allow for the people to come just and play? It's for a community ball field, and perhaps there isn't time for that, because we booked out every evening.
And maybe at that same point, as you turn around and go to somebody, now I'm just using Faith Lutheran Church as an example, so don't, I'm not picking on anybody or anything else, is you were to take, to tell them, okay, here's the deal, you know, you're doing this, but if this doesn't follow suit, you know, you take care of this thing for the city, and if it doesn't work out, you're going back to paying a high fee. You know, you put, let them, let them put it on there. I'd rather see the thing being used every day than sit every day empty. I mean, when you see activity, people are gonna start show, coming around and watching things, being part of town, being part of things. It, there's, it goes hand in hand. But that's my opinion, and I'm, I'm the only person, you know, I'm one person, there's four others up here, so-
I, I don't, I, I think discounting, you know, if we, we discount for nonprofits for the community center rental fee?
We do.
Correct? So maybe that, that would-
The, the nonprofit fee for a community center rental is 50% off?
So right now, it's 15 for the ball field? For how many? Per resident?
No, for a-
For a resident, yep, and that's for along, a couple hours? However, along the game goes, or whatever they need.
It's whatever time that they say, if they say they need it from 5 to 9, same classes per day, we don't do it by the hour. So if they want it for two hours, or if they want it literally all day, cause they're doing a-
Tournament or something, church tournament?
We don't-
Or whatever it might be.
Yeah, it's $15, no matter how long.
I think 50% off for nonprofits is, would be all right.
And if there isn't a resident, and they're a non-resident, 50% off of 25. I mean, but like you said, chances are, but then again, you might get somebody like Dale Evangelical Church comes up and they need a field to use, they're not, probably don't have a resident in town. I don't, I don't see anything wrong-
Saying nonprofit, I mean, everything would be, there'd be a nonprofit, whether you're resident or not, each fee would be 50% off. So whether they are or are not.
Yeah, the residency wouldn't matter, if it's nonprofit, it's nonprofit.
I would like to bring up, so let's discuss that, the park board, probably a year ago or so, um, plus a few months, that the CICV asked for a reduction in cost, because they were looking for a, and they're considered a nonprofit as a school. They were looking for a field, because they just didn't have enough, and they asked for a reduction, and they were denied. Kind of park board, so, just wanna, I don't know exactly their reasoning, but-
Well, it didn't, it didn't make it here to the council.
Yeah, do you recall?
Nope.
If you were there, but, um-
I was in this city a year ago.
No matter what, if it went in front of the park board, it's, they're an advisory board. And an advisory board, if they say they do not approve of it, they still need to come to council and have council make that decision. That needs to be plain and clear to any of these boards. Us five up here make that decision, they don't, they're just an advisory board, and it's not their parks to make that decision, it's the city's park. And we make the decisions for the city, not the board.
How about for park shelter reservations, that as well, if you were saw? For a non-resident, really, a residence free, but a non-resident, there's a fee?
What are we considering a park shelter?
Like Bluebird Park Shelter, um, you'd be have a very-
Oh, the awning type thing?
Picnic, yeah, mountain park.
Yeah, the picnic area, okay.
Yeah, if you're a non-resident, and you wanted to run that out, but if you're a non-resident, um, nonprofit, 50% on that as well?
I would say so, I think anytime you get into nonprofit, you're, you're looking at a-
They're not making any money, so why should we? That's the way I look at that.
I mean, I'm, you know, we do what I'd like to do at Bluebird Park, I wanna encourage churches to come out and use it. I mean, definitely, you know, music in the parks, that whole shebang is gonna be, would be huge for restaurants in town, gas stations in town, whatever.
Staff will work on the best way to write that, it might not do every individual item, but maybe we'll put a separate line for a purpose, or, you know, park amenities, nonprofits, 50% reduction, or something like that, we'll come up with the best way to include that.
And if we did that out there, we'd even say Jimmy's Pizza can put a sign out there in Bluebird Park, order your pizza from me.
That depends on how much it costs, I guess I put my sign up, yeah, with a sign permit.
The other half, the other 50%.
Any thoughts, Mr. Becker? From you?
Sorry, um, no, I'm, I'm okay with doing 50% off on nonprofits, that's fine.
We still gotta ask Daddy Warbucks, you know, when we start messing with the money, so.
No, that's, doing, doing that's not gonna have a substantial impact on the, on the citywide budget as a whole. Um, and to the extent that it increases utilization and, uh, and keeps some people happy, that seems like a reasonable trade off.
I like it. All right, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Did you put, uh, two and three in kinda the same deal, Mr. Becker, or do we need to do E3 as well? The, uh, 2021 budget updates proposed? I would assume that you as well?
At December 1st meeting here, we're gonna approve the final budget for 2021, we'll go through the labbies, do all that kinda work. Um, and since, uh, September, when we approved the preliminary lobby, we've got some changes. Um, happens every year, there's always something that comes up, right? There's, uh, you know, health insurance and all these things that, that come to us after the fact, and we have to simply make some assumptions at September, but we've gotta refine it for December. Um, so how I've kinda categorized this is that we'd previously discussed, um, the, the comp study, and hopefully everybody had a chance to review that in a little more detail when it went out. Um, and we've also talked about, uh, you know, hiring, well, we've now officially hired our own, uh, building official, so that would end the contract with Minspect at year end. Um, so those changes kinda, I put it to one side, to one category, um, those are kinda unique to, uh, to this particular budget cycle. And then I've taken and put it in the second category of, you know, other changes, right, that are, um, uh, a little more standard, right? The, the tweaks that you see in any given, any given year that are not necessarily out of the ordinary. Some of the non, um, non-comp plan, non-building official related items, um, that are, uh, of, of larger substance. Um, we do have some wage and benefit changes, um, that are outside of the comp study. Um, simply, I made assumptions about where we might hire a police officer, um, uh, you know, what health insurance a, a particular employee might select. Um, in September, I have to make those assumptions, but now we've got a little firmer information on that. Other biggest items would be, um, capital expenditures. Portable radios, we're gonna take off of the, uh, capital improvements plan for next year, uh, we were able to get those with COVID funds. Uh, we'll keep that on the rotation, so that it's scheduled for its recurring purchase at the end of its useful life, but we'll take off that one purchase for next year, drop that. Um, we've al, also got a couple changes for Towns at Droid and Isanty Hills, and move us to, uh, 2026 and 2025 respectively. We've got in addition to the stormwater maintenance plan, uh, extra 44,000, puts us up to 155,000, I think it is. And that is just so that if we do, if we are able to go ahead with the main street, um, project, uh, road project, we wanna be able to take care of that stormwater area there, um, so that's, uh, that's money to be able to handle that. And of course, we may not be able to go forward with the main street project, love to see how the state funding shakes out with the, with the current budget issues there, but, um, we'll just plan that, go, go with, go with the flow if we can, and, uh, if we need to, we'll just slide all the projects back one year and keep everything intact. Then this was touched on earlier, uh, in the, in the meeting here, uh, about the water meters. So right now, we're getting water meters, and we've got the basic infrastructure to be able to read the meters individually. Um, but eventually, we are gonna have to have network infrastructure for these meters, and we are gonna have to change up all the radios and all the meters. Um, so in 2022, we do have money for network infrastructure for the water meters, and then putting new radios on all the existing meters, right, the old style meters. Um, and then in 2028, we'll go through and we'll take out all of the old meters, um, and, uh, and get those updated to the new solid state ones. Then I've got a page in here with some really fine detail on exactly what we had, uh, approved at the proposed, uh, budget in September. Then the effects of those two category changes, and then the net effect at the end. Uh, I think the last page here, where I kinda summarize it by, um, department and fund, I think is a little easier to digest. Doesn't quite, it's, it's the last page on this section, right, so right before item four. The net effect of doing, implanting the comp plan and, uh, the change with the building official, uh, leaves the general fund ahead 63,000 bucks and change. Um, when we account for these other, uh, miscellaneous changes that you see come up in any given budget cycle, that puts us, uh, down 26,000, so we would net out if we took all these changes and, uh, said, yep, this all looks good, uh, we'd net the general fund out about $38,000 ahead. So then, of course, the question should be, is what do we do with 38,000? My recommendation is do not touch the levy. The tax rate is satisfactory, in my opinion. Um, I'd rather see us scoop that 38,000 bucks and put it into fund balance, so that we are protecting ourselves and mitigating risk of having a upward movement on that tax rate, uh, going forward.
And that's keeping our tax rate flat, Mike?
Yep.
I'm all for that.
Turn right. So I was gonna bring something up here, and I'm actually shocked that it's not in our committee of a whole, um, agenda here. Did you guys get a chance to read over the, um, employee compensation packets that were sent to you? Was there anything in there that you didn't like?
Yeah, um, I'm, are, are those water meters, Mike, is that the smart meters?
Yeah, these are the, the, these are the new meters that, remember, we had, um, we had Badger meters, and they're basically, well, they're not supporting them, quite frankly. Um, so these are, um, newer meters with Mueller, um, they will be supported, they've guaranteed that, and they're also solid state, so there's no moving parts. So, um, they're gonna have a useful, uh, a more accurate, um, more accurate readings throughout their entire useful life. On a normal meter that has a displacement, um, uses displacement to, uh, understand the water usage, um, you have a, a curve that trends downward, and then you get to about year 12, 13, you start losing enough of the read, right? Enough water goes through the meter that is not tallied, that you actually start losing revenue as a utility, you start giving them, giving water away. Um, and so these new meters would rectify that problem as well.
How are those smart meters? It seems like, just before I got on council, they put those in, like, so I've been on council- It seems like, just before I got on council, they put those in, like, so I've been on council six years, it seems like they're eight years old or something like that.
Yeah, so we're.
Do you know how old those are?
Uh, we've, Josie, do we saw them in fourteen?
Twelve.
Twelve. Yeah, so there, it's kinda twofold, right? So we, we can't keep, we don't have the old meters, we can't get those anymore, so we had to make some switch. Um, and the reason that we're making the switch that we are right now is this is what we need to do today. Um, the future expenditures for twenty twenty-two and then more importantly, in a larger sum in twenty twenty-eight, is to change out all of those old meters. And the reason we have twenty twenty-eight in the budget is that by the time we get to twenty twenty-eight, we can reasonably assume that any of the old displacement meters that we have are now running inefficiently enough that we are giving away enough water that is actually better for us to simply replace those meters. Would be money ahead to do so.
Yeah. I don't know, three quarters of a million dollars seems like an awful lot for something that doesn't seem that old, but maybe it's like, I don't know, is it like a, I know it runs on Wi-Fi, don't they, so maybe it's like a smartphone or something, but, um, it seems like we were better off when we had the old, when we had just, uh, standard meters before we went to all the smart meter technology, so.
Well, you know, there, there's the difference between the radio and the meter, right? The radio is more kind of the, the, the smart technology, I think is, is, is you might, you know, think about it in that analogy. Uh, what I, what I like about the solid state meter itself is that, um, there are no moving parts. So its accuracy is maintained throughout its useful life and its useful life ends when the internal battery is, uh, ends, right? It's got a twenty-year life and it's hermetically sealed, so it can't be, it, it can't be damaged, it can't get wet, it can't, can't fail otherwise. Um, so we get accurate reads throughout that entire twenty-year life, so, um, it will be, in the end, it will be a better deal for us. Um, otherwise, on a standard displacement meter, like I said, well, you're thirteen, you're, you're getting declining, uh, rate of return on that investment.
Well, and one thing I would like to add, Councilmember Berkeley, is when we did install, when I went back and looked at what we actually put in in two thousand twelve, we weren't putting in the highest and best technology at that time. So it's kinda like any technology that you have, whether it's computers or smartphone, whatever, it's only as good as when you get it and how long the useful life is for when they go obsolete and they get upgraded. And I think that that is partially why we're having to make shifts now, instead of seeing them go twenty years. You kinda get what you pay for and if you're not getting the top of the line at the time, it runs out sooner.
So is that gonna be something that's gonna be expected every ten to fifteen years, or is gonna have to be spent, uh, three quarters of a million dollars to replace this technology? Is that, is that gonna be a standard thing or, or is, or is this gonna take care of it for longer than that amount of time?
It's technology, as fast as technology is changing these days, I mean, what are they on iPhone twelve right now?
Now, you gotta think of this, Councilman Berkeley, if, if you had a laptop or a computer, how often do you have to replace those?
I get that, that's not even my point, the point is, is that. I'm, I'm wondering what the cost effectiveness is as far as what we used to have versus the smart meter technology, that's all. So you, I, I get that, I replace my computers all the time and, and you're right, they only last so long. But, well, we hadn't, I don't, I don't think the city was spending this kinda money with all that water meter technology prior to all this, two thousand twelve, but I could be wrong, so.
They were paying an employee to go from house to house to house to house every month to read the meters.
Which has gotta be a lot more money than what.
And then we're dealing with meters that are behind privacy fencing and dogs and, um, it's, it's way simpler, less time for staff, the way, the way we're doing it now.
Less liability.
Less, yeah, great, great.
So we have assurances from Mueller that they are not gonna let our radios just go obsolete like Badger did to us. And to the meter itself, right, not that communication piece that sits on top of, to the meter itself, if we still maintain the displacement meter as the desired technology for the water meters going forward, I would be simply budgeting, um, full replacement of all meters every thirteen to sixteen years and I would never want us to go past sixteen years. Simply because I know that we're gonna give away more water, um, than the cost to actually replace those meters. On this, I would maybe, I might budget money eighteen years, but otherwise, I'm gonna budget money every twenty years because that is the guarantee on the battery. Um, furthermore, we'll know at least six months ahead of time before all these, all these meters start to go. Um, we will actually get notifications when a battery is within six months of its end, end of useful life. So theoretically, at nineteen years and six months, we're gonna start getting notices, um, that these batteries are, are gonna fail within six months. And if we've done our math correctly, uh, we'll have money budgeted to go ahead and handle that, uh, at that time. So we will get additional years and we will also be more accurately, uh, um, metering the water that, uh, is going through, uh, throughout the, uh, city.
I may weigh in a bit, within five years, they're gonna have some other technology that bad, that this battery, when it does go bad, it's a different battery that's probably gonna be regenerated by every time the meter moves, it's gonna regenerate the battery. They already have that technology, they use it in flush valves and toilets and urinals. That every time that flushes, it actually regenerates and repowers the battery. So, as time goes, there's gonna probably be something, in, within twenty years, I guarantee you, they're gonna have something that's, we probably won't even need to replace them at all. After that point, I mean, technology changes that much. So i- it's, uh, it's just like a furnace in somebody's house, manufacturers tell you they're only good for ten years. That's buying a furnace today, but ten years ago, the technology that they had in furnaces is obsolete already. So you have to pretty much replace it anyway because the technology's changed that much in furnaces. And this is no different, it's still a working type of mechanical issues, so.
All right, any other questions on, on this?
Thanks, Mike, appreciate your information.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's move on to E four, the ordinance drafts for discussion and consideration.
Well, you were, you were gonna say something about the employee compensation?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, my, I got all switched up and I totally forgot. I was just curious if you guys looked over that, there was, the, the whole packet was sent to you, uh, via email. We had that presentation on it and we didn't have any literature in front of us, I'm, I'm hoping you went over the literature. Uh, I was actually shocked, Ms. Wood, you didn't put that in here for discussion.
It is included by direction from the last, from that, um, presentation, that those numbers are included in what Mike just presented in that budget amendment, and then the study to accept it from A P D is on council, in the council agenda.
Oh, okay, we just bumped our rate to council. Okay.
In the consent agenda. But.
Well, we just are accepting it.
We're just, okay.
I did not hear from any council members if they had any changes they wanted A P D to make.
Okay. So we're not, like, approving that today necessarily, it would be?
Well, now we.
Accepting that, they're done with the study.
We have to accept it because we paid a third party to perform and it's independent studies, we have to accept it. If anyone had any changes that they wanted A P D to make to it, um, I would have put those guard, I didn't hear anything. But right now, if you have any discussions of whether it should or should not go into the budget, this would be the time.
Okay.
Did you, did you have anything, Councilman Gordon, you wanted to?
Well, I was just curious, I mean, how many open positions and unfilled positions do we have right now? None.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
How many positions do we have open currently? Katie answered that we don't have any, maybe a liquor store clerk?
So I would just say that I think it's probably good where it is, we, we, we don't have any open positions.
Yeah, but.
But this is to retain them.
This is to retain who we have. If we don't retain who we have, then it's gonna be a revolving door. And that's, that's the only thing I'm worried about, Councilman Gordon, is the staff that we have now. If somebody were to offer, I hate to throw him in this, the chief, a five thousand or ten thousand dollar raise, if he went over to Wyoming, he'd be an idiot to stay here. He'd be gone, I don't wanna lose him, he's been an asset to this police department. Katie's, Ms. Brooks has been an asset to our human resources, she's done probably an overabundance of work for what she's being paid for. And then looking at that study, she's actually underpaid. Ms. Selman, here's another one, she's being underpaid at the moment. That woman's a genius, now we're just offering her more tools to become even a bigger genius at what she does. Here's a really big one, two big ones I'll give you, Mr. Becker, Ms. Wood. Everybody says she's overpaid, well, that study shows she's underpaid. Mr. Becker. I would never challenge that man on any number he ever threw out, and if he was doing the city wrong, I'd be the first one to raise my hand and tell him he's gotta go. But he's done remarkable things for the city and I intend to keep that man for as long as he wants to stay in the city. But we have to give them an incentive to stay put. If we don't, they'd be an idiot not to go elsewhere, and I don't want to give that elsewhere opportunity. I'd rather for them to say, hey, I'm happy, but the money sucks, I don't wanna hear that.
We've lost a lot of.
A lot of great employees.
In the past, just 'cause they're, you know, and we're not the only city.
Seventeen in one year, Councilman Gordon, before my time.
A lot of people use the smaller populated cities to get some experience and use.
Stepping stones.
We don't wanna see that either.
And also, we're becoming in compliance with what other cities are doing. And not just the city of our size, smaller, bigger, whatever, doesn't matter, it's experience raised.
I mean, don't, don't get me wrong, if these people were doing horrible jobs, I wouldn't be standing here or sitting here saying, hey, let's give them more money. But there's nobody on the staff that I can say does a horrible job, nobody.
And I'm not, and I'm not trying to imply that, I think they all do a great job.
No, and I know you're not, I'm just saying.
And I appreciate everything that they do, my, my only point is that this study is telling us this, but a free market experiment, which we've been conducting since the city's been started, we got a full staff right now, so you can tell me that we're underpaying the people, but we're not, because we're fully staffed, so we're paying what, what the market is, is dictating. That's all I'm saying, I, I think we're, we're fully staffed, we've been fully staffed for quite a while, I think, you know, you know, I mean, I'm not against, I mean, I think they get a three percent cost of living raise every year, is that right? I mean, so, I mean, it's not like we're not continuing to, to pay more, but we're fully staffed, so.
For how long?
I mean, you can't ask me to predict that, but. I'm just telling you, I mean, the reality is, we're fully staffed at what we're paying right now.
You couldn't predict it, but if we were to give them efficient wages.
I would, I would. Can't we handle that on a case-by-case basis?
That's where consent to pay equity and we get out of compliance, because that had been done in the past when we had positions that we couldn't fill. And I will say that a lot of our, many of our department head positions fall into that bracket, we were not competitive to get more skilled staff. Um, so certain positions were bumped up, that's where Katie can speak better on this than I can even. The pay equity, we become out of compliance, which is why we had to do something. Because people just got more money, just like we had said last time, as councilmen said stated, some people were offered more money to stay and it worked for a short amount of time, but then they still left. Again, that still stayed in their budget, and some people, but not others.
That's not very big of a fear across the board for any of them, so I mean.
So if everybody doesn't get a raise, nobody gets a raise? That's what you're telling me?
Because the pay goes on a grade based on points. If you pay, let's just say, pick on Travis, the chief of police is hard to fill if he leaves and votes a different city. If we just bump up his, now his, his, um, pay grade is the same as Mike Becker's. How are you gonna pay that position more, but not him, and they're on the same grade, they're the same points, dependent on the skill level, what they do, there's a big matrix on how they get the points. But how would you give that position more, because we couldn't fill it, but not Mike?
I would tell you, I'd be a hundred percent behind you.
Get shot at.
I'd take a hundred percent, I'd be a hundred percent.
Based on that there's probably more people that are willing to do Mike's job and there's less that are willing to do Travis's job. You know, I mean, not that Mike's is any less difficult of a job to do, but, but Travis might get shot at, and that's, I mean, uh, and if we're not in compliance with that, what happens?
So, three years ago was when our last compliance report was sent to pay equity and my response back was, where did these numbers come from? Because our scale currently had, it was from two different systems that didn't even jive or make sense. And they said, you need to get this cleaned up by the next pay equity report. That was my first year here, it was like, first couple of months I worked here, and I was looking at this, saying the same thing, where did these points come from? So historically, it's been made up positions that have been pointed all over the place, so technically, we would not be in compliance this year if we don't make a change.
So what happens if you're not in compliance though, Ms. Brooks?
Fine, I mean, there's two large universities that have just gotten in trouble for pay equity problems and they're, like, looking at millions of dollars to fix it. So they don't run into lawsuits and fines.
It's similar to when you had, like, a motion violation, but it's now a charge, pay equity.
Well, and I'm not saying that maybe, so I mean, all, but you're not, we don't have to use these amounts, I think we talked about that last, last time we met, was that the amounts are not necessarily of, of the pay are not necessarily what gets you into compliance, it's that everybody has the same system and that we use these points. Not necessarily that the pay is every, right? Am I understanding that right? I mean, to be in compliance, it's based on the points, not, not the actual pay itself.
Just, yeah, have the system in place, right?
As long as the system is in place, right?
The points are all tied to a scale, to keep everyone in the right, not chronological order, but in the, they're slotted appropriately.
So the points would affect their wage and the wage would affect the point?
It was in the study that Josie sent out, there was, uh, one page that had like a green column on it. That was the breakdown of the summary, that actually shows exactly what it would be for steps. So to say, um, we're all getting different raises or anything like that, it wasn't that necessarily, other than getting us in line and then knowing where we're going to be moving forward, so it's just on a different scale.
So for example, if you took the, the grades and pay that they had suggested, which they base that off of being in the market, right? Comparable, not above, not below, but kinda right on par. If you were to say drop everyone's pay because you have to be uniform, ten grand from what they suggest. You could do that, yes. However, what you're gonna have happen, because you're keeping that uniform with the pay based on the points, some people who were right at the margin now are below, and people who were below are now farther behind. You have to do it uniform, if that makes sense.
So, only because I have a slowdown or a pause in my life at the moment, I thoroughly went over that, Councilman Gordon. Not once, but twice. And then my second time, a- and I'll admit, I was with you. And I think we spoke about that last meeting, then I was like, God, I don't, do we really have to go with them numbers? You know, I, I kinda hemmed and hawed about it, but now, after going over it not once but twice, I personally, I think we'd be an idiot not to adopt it.
One thing I also.
They did all the work for us.
I mean, I don't wanna speak to how fantastic our staff is because their work should, performance should show that to everybody, right? But one thing that the city does, I care about costs that are unexpected, and when staff does leave and we can't re, we don't retain them for whatever reason, typically, what we've seen in our city.
I was gonna ask you this.
People vote for Metro for twenty to thirty thousand more, for a short twenty-nine drive more for that much money. And what happens, and I'll use Mr. Becker's position as an example, because he's here and can speak on it, is when we could find a finance director, even after we tapped on more money to the wage, we had to go through a recruiting firm, which costs the city money. We then had to, um, get somebody in the door and they didn't make it, so we spent more money to try to get them to find us a better fitting person that would stay. We then needed to add on more money to the wage to get someone in the door. Um, but before we even got the next person, who was Mike, the city had to pay for months and months, and I don't know, I think it was like six months because we had some common, and they laughed me in front of me again, we went through like four finance directors. We had to pay for interim services and we shopped around and the best deal that we could hit was paying ten thousand dollars and change per month for a person who came here for a day and a half per week, and that was it.
So you, it's fair to say that we probably.
So much money that we spent out, trying, and we still were throwing money trying to get people to come here.
Just, just for example, and I, I don't even think Dan remembers this, I don't know, were you on council when Sarah Cotton was here?
Yeah.
Sarah Cotton left the city of Isanty for eight thousand dollars a year more. Eight thousand dollars a year more. And after she left is when Ms. Wood's talking about this, we went through like eight different, we hired one, she came in, oh, I can't do this. She was here a week and she left, and then we brought in another person and.
We had four, but yeah.
Yeah, there was quite a few.
So it's fair to say that we're spending more money.
We went through the same thing too.
We paid for interim services for community development director as well, and it's not, it's not the wage of whether, how to get somebody, it's these huge extravagant numbers.
Yeah, so it's, it's fair to say that we're spending more money training and hiring or going through a recruitment, but we're spending more money trying to fill that position to where if we were just given and say, you know what, we'll just pay Mr. Becker more and. I, here, here's my thing, is each and every one of you, you don't come here for a paycheck, you're invested. And what I mean by you're invested is you have care and compassion in the job that you do. And what I mean by you're invested is you have care and compassion in the job that you do for the city of Isani. That's hard to find in an employee. So for me to see that out of each and every one of you, I hear you guys day in and day out say it, Mr. Becker just said it in this meeting. I would never let that happen, not in the city of Isani. That's the kind of stuff I like to hear. Because I know he's going to do what's fair for the, the community and the residents of the city and he's doing his job. I've heard Katie Brooks say it. I've heard you say it. I've heard the chief say it for crying out loud. I've heard Ms. Selman say it. I've heard everybody in here say, I would never let that happen to this community. So you're invested, you're, not only you're, I hate to say it this way, but it is what it is. Not only your pockets, but your hearts and your mind are in your jobs. You're, you're all in or you're, you're not in at all. So in my mind, why wouldn't I pay you? I would pay you to stay here. So I don't have to spend that money to go to recruiter or. Post in the newspaper for a job opening and then cost, it's costing me to train you. And then if you don't make it, then we have to start all over again. So you're, you're, you might, I might as well just. I might as well just make it rain money in here because that's what we're doing. Instead of let's just, let's just pay the people we have, they're going to stay here. And then if you don't stay here, at least we could sit here and say, we tried.
Well, and if they don't stay here because everyone has to express for them and their families needs, at least someone would recruit somebody. We get people who are skilled. I mean, we, we have taken people in here who are not as skilled and we train them up. That takes an incredible amount of time, resources and push of projects to the back burner. And I can say that because I've seen it happen in our city. I've seen it where I have done four hats at once. Is that the best for the city long term? It's not because other things suffer. One person can do four positions. For an extended amount of time, which we've had in our city and do a fabulous job at all four. You can, and even if I was putting in eighty hours a week, it can't be done successfully if you have skilled people in their positions doing the project. And the work that needs to be done on a day to day.
He, here's another example that I can use. Two year, everybody in the city knows, I'm going on only my fourth year as a resident in the city. My first two years of just sitting in the audience and watching the city work. The police department struggled on getting cops to apply in that job. But now the next two years, this council gave that police department every tool it needed. Just like this would be a tool for the rest of the city.
Then we allowed them to start up a higher pay grade. So that's what I'm saying is can't we.
Not only that, but we gave them, uh, forward latering. We gave, we gave them tools and now he gets the top of the line candidates. And he not only gets the top of the line candidates, but he gets multiple ones to where we're getting damn good cops. Now, how are we going to keep them cops?
Well, we started them at a higher grade, so.
I'd like to speak to that because that's actually a really good point. So we did just start doing lateral pay. Um, in the PD world, which has helped turn my design and that is showing for itself to get skilled, skilled people. Um, what we've done on the other side, the non-union positions is we have done that for years. We've started them at step five. Six of seven steps. What happens is because they jumped one through five because we need to get somebody in the door. Their glass ceiling hits them one year. That causes people to look and that kind of perpetuates that stepping stone model. Is that we already had to jump enough to show that we were out of the competitive range.
And if we don't stay competitive with the other cities around us and or the taller buildings. Then why wouldn't they use us as a stepping stone and then run towards those taller buildings?
We're not going to stay competitive though. That's, that's.
The study is making us competitive.
For a short time.
But if, if they keep, if cost of living continues to stay, you know, around two and a half, three, three percent. We should stay with that unless for whatever reason Blaine has given their employees cost of living five percent. Which won't happen.
No, I, I would, I would have a, I would be a hundred percent on your side.
I was on his side at the beginning.
Be a hundred percent on your side. If we were raising taxes to three percent. We're keeping taxes flat, plus we're putting some extra money back into the fund balance, which was depleted for over there by Brookview. I'm not going to get into what that building is. Everybody knows what it is. But we're getting that fund balance back into there to get us back where we need to be to keep our taxes flat. So, think about it this way. If we don't get in compliance. Now our next audit comes in and our audit says, oh, wait a minute dudes, you're wrong. This all of a sudden just costs us five million dollars.
I'm not saying not to get in compliance. I'm just saying that.
Well, what, what you're saying is here's a dollar and I'll give you another dollar, maybe six months, a year from now. That, that isn't going to cut it. That's, that audit is going to come back and burn the city. And it's going to cost us a hell of a lot more than what we're going in. Here, we're still giving our employees where they should be with their wages. Then we're also putting money back in our fund balance, plus we're not raising taxes. I guarantee you, you're going to walk out that door still a hero, no matter what.
We're evening out the playing field for everybody and we're not, and we're not raising taxes.
Well, here's another question I had for you. So like liquor store, we're overpaying. Do they, are they now going to get paid less because we're adopting these, these new levels?
No, they'll, they either black. They don't, no one's going.
They go no higher.
No one's not going to get a demotion. And we have a couple other positions, not just the liquor.
There was, yeah, there was two other, I believe.
They, they will only experience a cost of living adjustment.
And then here's, here's the other thing, this whole, this whole thing in being in compliance is if you take somebody. For, as, as example for human resources for Katie, they just come out of, they just come out of college. They need a job. They're not starting at what she's getting because she's already got the years of experience involved. They're starting back down here, which that's, we're in compliance with hiring somebody at that stage of their life. Without an experience. So we're making it a pla, a fair playing field. Josie, all of a sudden, let's say the city just does fabulous. We're just, we're just booming like there's no tomorrow. Josie needs another assistance, assistant. They can hire somebody that has no experience, that she can train into that position and could stay here. They don't have to pay her a big dollar amount, but she's in compliance with what this, this study has done. Jimmy, I'm a hundred percent for you. I don't want to spend anybody's money. But I'm going to be honest with you. We're not raising taxes. That's been a huge thing. He's got this already figured in there. We're still putting back money back into our fund balance. Plus giving everybody where they should be. I see it's a win-win all the way around. We're not raising taxes. It is an ultimate goal of mine to say on here that I've done my best to drop taxes or keep them flat. I guarantee you, you go to any resident in here, they'll say, yeah, I'd like to see my taxes go down, but if my taxes are flat, I'm fine with that. I'm not paying anymore. But if you've got to jump at that three, four percent, and Mike has said this numerous times. It's this that hurts. This is great. It's this that will kill us in a heartbeat.
Which in our past, it did look like that. But since we've been on here, it's just flatlined.
The person that you replaced, the way she was treated, I don't know how in the hell she even stuck it out here. Because I'll tell you, I had to go sit in there, I, I sat down with her many times and told her, hey, Josie, I, I feel for you. And she'll tell you this. She was treated very poorly.
I think I carried her back in a few times, actually.
But I mean, she was treated very poorly. And, and she's stuck here without that being that, and if it would have been anybody else, they would have went out the door, I go. And no matter how much money they're getting paid. So you've got to realize, this is putting us on an even keel. Keeping us in balance and in check with our audit and we're not going to have problems. I'd rather, I'd rather see this money go out the door now than get nailed five million dollars in a fine because we didn't get in compliance.
And, and Councilman Gordon, I'll admit, when we first went through this, I hemmed and hawed. I mean, I, I wasn't with you, but I wasn't against you either. And, and we, I think we might have had that conversation. And, and now I've, I've sat at home because I have time and a pause in my life that I went over it once and then went over it twice. Because I thought, boy, do I, am I really seeing what I'm seeing? So I went over it a second time and what I'm seeing is we're underpaying a lot of our employees. Why would they stay here? I go, I mean, if it was me, I got a fam, you got a family. You wouldn't do it either. I don't care what. You or anybody said, Councilman Gordon, you'd be out of here. You'd go to the next place that's going to pay you more and take care of you and your family more. And I, I couldn't expect anything less out of any of these guys.
Everybody, everybody wants to, at minimum, at least get paid average. Average pay. There's people that are worth more than that though.
Agreed.
This study, I believe, is average pay. I think a lot of our employees are well above average. And like I say, everybody deserves to get paid average.
Correct.
This woman, she started out in this place working, doing what Jenny Garvey did, managing the community center. She's bled through blood, sweat and tears to get where she's at. In the last, what, year and a half that Don was here, you were being mentored by him? Or I mean, before you kind of stepped into that role, I mean, you were being mentored to go into that position. And that was always the ultimate goal of this council. This was long before you came in here, was for us to promote within. I've always been a bit of advocate of pro, promote within. But you can't even promote within, you can't even bring people in if we don't get in compliance with them.
And I'm a big advocate of retention.
And that's how you get retention, is promoting within.
I agree.
I've been a huge advocate of that. It's, that's the best way to, you know, you get a guy that's been out delivering pizzas for you. And he's like, oh, you know, I just ain't cutting it. I'm, I'm just using this as an example. I'm just ain't cutting it delivering pizzas. Jimmy, I'm going to quit you. I can't do it. Well, what if I make you, you know, a cook? And it gives you a raise. What do you think he's going to do? He's going to jump on that in a heartbeat and quit driving his car. Puts you in a position trying to find somebody else to drive for you. I know you're starving for drivers. Why is that? Because people don't want that job. Because it doesn't pay enough.
Well, the tips are good.
The tips are good, but it doesn't pay enough to do it.
I tipped my driver quite a lot.
And, and, and understand, I mean, what you charge for pizza.
It pays, it pays really well, just to settle that point real quick. But it pays really well by the time that you put in. So I mean, we're talking easily twenty dollars an hour on average.
But they don't always see that.
A lot of times a lot more than that. But you might only get three or four hours, so.
Yep, but, but there again, if you paid them more, then comes off bottom dollar, you're going to start raising your prices. Because their profit margins aren't that high. I mean, they're, you know, you're making a living with what you're doing. But you start, all of a sudden, you've got to start increasing the cost of that pizza to somebody because you're paying a driver more money.
No, and that's my point is that.
But here's the thing, we're not raising the taxes to anybody. We're still getting in compliance. We're giving them that raise and not raising the cost. So we've done our job. We've done our diligence. I know what you want to say and I agree a hundred percent. I'd like to see us do this number, but we can't. I, I think we're a hundred percent better off to go for those lean times if we keep things like this. Keep them flat, never raise them. If we were to drop, we sure we can drop it, but we're going to have to pick it up somewhere. But all of a sudden, COVID nineteen causes another shutdown for everybody. There's a lot of people aren't going to be able to afford to do anything. So if we keep it this way, still have some money in the fund balance to keep everything operating, I'm saying we're, that's a win-win situation for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people won't be able to afford to do anything, but our city staff will be okay because we give them a raise.
If, but, but if, if we get into that point, something has to go somewhere. And that means somebody gets laid off, plain and simple. The city has to operate no matter what we do. And we have to lay it off from someplace, we'll have to figure out how we lay it off from somewhere. It's, that's just, that's when, when, when we had that financial crunch, this building was operated a hundred percent on department heads. There was nobody else. Nobody else.
And in our staffing format was approved back around January, February, we don't have any staff being added. We have this split between HR and our senior card, which are the people that we have already. But there might be a PD person coming in a year or two. Other than that, we are operating with the staff that we need for capacity for quite some time. So we don't, I don't project to add any staff. Everyone just.
Well, we got that grant for one cop that should be here like yesterday. But other than that, you're right, it should be here.
I would just, so I mean, is it an option? Let's just, so I mean, can we use the current point scale? Cause the point, is it the point scale that's getting us into compliance or can we apply the point scale to our current pay? That we do and then go from there? I mean, is it even an option?
The points that we have are tied to a scale so that it keeps everyone even. So that if your points are five eighty-two and Jeff's points are five fifty, you're not making the exact same. There has to be a different, uh, different like scale for each person, if that makes sense. So.
Each job description.
If, the points are based on the job description, so then are tied based on skilled, knowledge, a bunch of different criteria to get the pay.
Right. And the pay ba, the points basically represent dollars for that position, right? I mean.
So as I said before, you could then take the points that we have and make the whole thing shift by equal amount. To keep that system intact. But if you just pick and choose certain positions and move those, but not others, now you're going to know the whole thing. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
You have to move the whole thing. So everyone, let's just say arbitrary number, if there's eight percent between point grades. You need to keep that eight percent. Otherwise, you're not going to be in compliance. So you either ship them all to something different, not some, that's part of the problem we have. We shifted some, but not all.
So the answer to his question is no, it would not be feasible.
Simple answer is.
No, it's feasible. It's just you're going to piss some people off because you're going to lower their pay.
But we're not going to lower anybody's pay.
So I mean, we could stay in compliance and not do these raises, but at the same time, we.
We're not in compliance now.
Well, yeah.
Potentially people that, let's just say they had two more steps to go. If you shift them down, now they hit their glass ceiling early.
But can we, can we do that? I mean, let's say we, we match this to our current pay levels and then. Is it all based on time that they go to that next level of pay? Or can we say, okay, the people that, the people that are getting a, a decrease now can be raised up to that next level so they're not losing pay?
It won't work like that.
It has to be off of time spent or what, or how, how does, how do they?
In the private sector, you can pick and choose. Just like you can pick if you're going to get three percent full and you're going to get five percent or your raise is going to be five grand and yours is going to be three grand. You can't do that in this sector.
Okay. Who, who, who actually makes the rules for that stuff?
The state.
The state.
State and the federal government.
Okay.
It is much different than the private sector where you can give rate, raises based on a lot of you, what you see the big difference in. We had that incorporated study, however, we are not implementing that at this time. It's the merit. Depending on how good of a job you do, that is really not a thing that is done in the past. Now it's kind of happening more and more to retain good people. But that's not something that happened in the public sector, but that's happened all the time in the private sector. It's like if you had someone who comes in and like, oh, we really want that person. They were at this company, we knew they were fantastic. We're going to pay them this to get them to come over. You can't do that in the public sector.
So basically there's, what, and maybe I didn't hear what you said, but so like for them, like let's say if we, why won't that work? Like why can't we just go to our current scale level and then, you know, if this person would have been brought down by that eight percent, you know, across the board decrease, then. Why can't we bump them up to the next level to keep them where they were or, or maybe a little bit more for them to keep them at that next level? What's the reason?
They're all the levels.
All the levels are based on what though? How do you, how do you get to the next level? No, I'm saying like, you know how it's like the per, is it per year?
Per year.
Per year, okay.
On their anniversary once per year.
Per year, okay. So the only way to get them to that, you can't just say, okay, we're going to bring you up to the next level now.
I would say you have maybe a lawsuit on your hands because how is that, how is that fair? Because the public sector, everything's done by the group, you know, these quote un.
Well, we're still paying them the same amount by going to the next level, but.
Let's say me and you, me and you do the same job, our job descriptions identical, you know? And they, they move me up to, say it's a seven year step system. I'm here three years, they decide they to move me up to step six and you stay at three. It's not going to come out very good for the city.
Is it damn, is it damned if we don't, it's damned if we do, is the way you look at it?
I think it's a horrible system. Somebody better run for, for governor or something like that and fix that problem or run.
I vote Jimmy Gordon for governor.
Run for state senate.
I would like those three mandates that we give for water and sewer pumps too.
Not only does the system's going to help void situations like that. But it'll, it'll keep, you know, because there's been people that work here that are great at what they do. They've been approached by other cities to leave. It's not necessarily they're looking for other jobs. They get approached by other cities.
We call those poachers.
How are we going to put like, let's say the liquor store scale? So they're starting at a higher scale though to keep their pay the same. So why can't we do that with other positions?
Because everyone did the same thing. They took their pay, moved them onto the new scale and the closest to what they currently were making without going below. Getting into motion is how they did that. Happens the same way for everyone. We don't, we're not picking and choosing what step they're on. It just happens. We don't, we're not picking and choosing what step they're on. It just happens to be when you take their pay, match it to the new scale, they're at step six or seven versus one for a different position. But everyone's being treated the same on how they get onto the new scale.
Okay.
I, I know you, I, I, the reason I'm letting this go on is I want you to understand. I know you don't like it, you don't agree with it. But I want you to understand, Councilman Gordon.
I've been through a couple different job studies, and it's, every time it's a little different, cause it's a different company that might be doing it, but once you've been through it, once, for sure twice, it's, it's a lot easier to grasp on why you need to do it and the pros and cons of doing it.
Starting from. You really wanna hear blow your mind? I've been on here for ten years. I have never got a raise on council, seriously. I'm not, not BSing you. It's been the same for ten years, Jimmy.
Not even the cost of living increase?
Nope, no. Council has never gotten increased, and the previous mayor had promised he was gonna do that three years ago.
When I first got.
And I'm not promising that.
I met with Josie and Mike and I said, is fifty dollars a meeting, is that, that, that seems really high to me.
Uh-uh. Cambridge, Cambridge, Cambridge gets, they get less per meeting, but they get more per time. It's weird. So, they actually, city of Cambridge council members make, I believe it's about five hundred dollars quarter more than we do.
I'd do it for free.
I'm with you.
I just heard it. It's on record. It's okay.
Okay, if you treat it fair, you tell them that.
Yeah.
All right, let's, let's move on here. Uh, E four ordinance drafts for discussion and consideration.
Okay, Mayor, Council, so we have three ordinances here. Two of them, the first two have been heard and proposed in your pocket. I'm gonna run through the first two, and then the second one, which is the snowmobile, Chief Myers is going to take to seek direction on that. So, if you go to chapter two eighty-four, this was on our, kind of finalizing our process of going through all our ordinances and making some league model changes that are recommended, making sure things are not, are not open up for legal reasons, and just clarifying some things that were confusing to our residents when they called for the same question. We thought, okay, we could look at these to make sure that um, these are making sense to not just staff, but the people who are reading that, like their residents. So, streets and sidewalks. So, we get into this. We did clarify language. Uh, we don't have an official map. They had a lot of language about that. Uh, we have maps and we do update them. The Department Director, uh, does maintain our streets map, our, um, addressing map. So, we just changed that language to make sure it's reflective. So, if someone called asking for our map, we know what they're talking about. If they call and ask for, I want your official city map, we actually don't have that. So, cleaned up that language. The placement numbers on the building, I did CD input from our fire chief, Jankovich, and he gave me the fire code language. Ours numbers were not large enough, that's what they should be. It seems like after talking with Sheila that people do put in those larger numbers. I think it's four inches. It used to have three inches. So, we put that language in here because we want people to get emergency services as they need. Um, in the next section, there was some typos in north and south, that the street number even incorrect, so that's been updated. Damage to sidewalks, this was just putting in practice of what we do. Now, even though it states in here that residents are responsible for sidewalk damage, do note that the city does take on a certain amount of maintenance and repair of our sidewalks, for example, under heating and things. We do have twenty-five hundred dollars a year that we typically budget for going through the city and taking care of those. So, those costs aren't put onto the residents. The snow removal section, so we're on section fourteen. This has been revised. We have snow removal in about four different chapters, and I tried to simplify them to make sure that they're going back to one thing, the same thing, of what Public Works does it and when they need to do it. But also having it go back to chapter two sixteen into nuisances, cause that's where it defines that if you don't, uh, remove snow after Public Works has, it's considered a nuisance. Materials on streets, alleys and sidewalks, section sixteen, I took and removed a lot of the language in there and just referenced chapter two sixteen because that's what it is. If you put a bunch of stuff out in the street, it doesn't need to be in the street section. It's a nuisance. It goes in the nuisance section. So, again, just clarify, it's easy to understand. Uh, that's pretty much it for revision for chapter two eighty-four.
So, if someone has, um, perfect example would be a chair and a grill sitting on the boulevard for like six weeks, six weeks thinking someone's gonna take them, cause they, they want them gone. And then the plows come by and then throw snow on the chair, and then the chair gets tipped over. Now, it's in the middle of sidewalk and they residents still do not move them. How long does it take before someone has free stuff sitting on the curb before the city can just go in there and charge them to have it, stuff removed?
Because we're going more complete base, if someone made a complaint, that's when the city would go, would first come to take a look at it. So, it could be there for a day, and someone thought that's an eyesore. It could be there for weeks.
Okay.
It's complaint based.
Any questions, comments or concerns?
I had asked Sheila, I think this is, this is the same stuff that you and I were talking about, right? So, somebody had asked me about being able to park during the winter time off of the driveway. And, you know, I think it was a trailer that they had that they were fined several times for last year, and it was, uh, you know, it was already snowed in and they couldn't get to it, and, you know, which is debatable, of course, but, I mean, during the winter time and the winter months, I mean, do you think we could allow for some of these things to be parked? Maybe not, you know, maybe a certain distance from the driveway or off the driveway, even if it's in the grass. I mean, as long as it's not in the middle of their yard, that kind of thing. I mean, can we?
Well, it's, if it's a trailer and it doesn't have an engine or anything, you're fine.
It has to be on improved.
Like.
Or it has to be in the backyard, or it has to be on the side yard, and it has to be covered by a, uh, I forget, privacy fence sort of thing, right?
If you can't see it, no harm, no foul, that kind of language, yeah.
I mean, if it's a utility trailer, I believe it can be on like decorative rock or wood chips or gravel.
Right, but I mean, they may not wanna change their yard to that, you know what I mean, so.
I see what Councilman Gordon's saying, is how are you gonna know?
Seasonal.
There's so much snow there. How would you know if it's on a improved surface or not?
Probably when this person was ticketed seven, eight times, that was previous to being co- being as a complaint driven.
We used to not be complaint driven, but more looking for violations, so.
Then, then I could see where they got hit six or seven times. Since we've been complaint driven, if your neighbor isn't making a complaint, then we have no reason to knock on your door.
Right. But I was just thinking, I mean, can we add something that, you know, during the, the snow months, I think, I don't know what it is, November first of, what, I don't know what the end of it is, but I mean, during that time where they can't park on the street, I mean, could we allow for vehicles to be parked, you know, eight feet, you know, next to the driveway, from the edge of the driveway to eight feet out or?
I don't know about vehicles, cause then you're letting like engine oil leak into your grass, and that's a no-no for agricultural reasons, but.
Well, it goes into the Department of Health.
Yeah.
And the PCA cares about that.
The well protection.
Yeah, and if, I mean, it may seem pretty innocent to let someone do it for a little bit of time, which maybe no harm, no foul to us, but if someone complains to one of those two agencies.
Well, maybe it's not a, you know, I mean, they were asking about a trailers. I mean, let's say I'm not even, maybe it's not even a motorized vehicle, but at least a trailer.
If it was a trailer, I don't, again, no harm, no foul.
But I mean, right now, that's not allowed. I mean, can we change that to make something like that allowed, where it's, you know, during the winter months, we can let them get their, their stuff off the street and up into the, to where they don't have to go bring it around to the backyard.
Well, they shouldn't have trailers left on the street really anyway, anytime of year.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't have a trailer left in the street anyway. I, I can actually.
In their yard.
Yeah, I mean, they gotta.
Well, I thought he said out in the street, cause they can't park in the street.
Well, they can't park in the street that time of year, so that's what I'm saying. Right now, they have to go and bring it all the way around to the backyard, or they gotta put it in the side yard, and they gotta cover it, so you can't see it. You know, I mean, if they just park it next to the driveway for the winter months, so they can keep it off the road and be in compliance with that, I mean, cause we're basically telling you can't park on the road, and you have to park this thing in your backyard or in the, which, I mean, that could be a real big hassle to try to, try to find a spot for that, so.
Just bring it back to Cal and go over parking ordinances?
We could, so that, I don't know if we have enough time to get through all the things. So, if he's talking, let's move on to, I didn't hear any changes on, from what I recommended on two eighty-four. So, we'll move on to chapter two twenty-seven, which is parking. Let me circle back to that one, okay? So, other things, we did have quite a few changes in this chapter. Uh, start at the beginning. We had a lot of, uh, definition changes, and that was because a lot of ours did not need or in some places conflicted to statute, so that's why those are all red, and you see a lot of changes in there. Beyond definitions, we get into, um, let's see, our, making sure our no parking were up to snuff. Uh, we did add in, um, some of those are not new. They've been done, but they just weren't in the ordinance, so we, I cleaned that up, and then we added in Sixth Avenue. It has no parking on one side. That's because of MSA funding, so we have to do that. We did add ten, so I'm in section two, number ten. No motorized vehicles permitted to stay stationary on a street for more than seven consecutive days without prior approval. And this is because we've had some, and please can talk more on this, we've had some things like a pontoon or other things that are sitting on the street for such a long, long time. There really wasn't anything written in code that says that it can't stay there. Now, if it moves a couple of feet, okay, they've moved it, but if we have it where it's like a, an abandoned old vehicle, but not,
Old green fish and boat.
In our code to say, you shouldn't let it sit there. So, that was added.
I've seen cars with flat tires sitting on the side of the, like, yeah.
That's another good example. But i- if it's licensed in town, there's not a lot we can do about it, even though it seems to be sitting there for quite a while. A lot of, uh, cleanup and language, nothing major in there. Now, when you get to section eight and beyond, in our current code, there was a table matrix, which someone conflicted some of what was written in text. So, what I've done, hopefully you agree, is I've removed the table, which is somewhat confusing, and I've turned that into text words, so it's very more, much more black and white. What can I do? And I feel like our residents will be able to look at that and say, okay, that makes sense to me. I can do this, or I can't do this. Instead of looking at this matrix of, is it, does it have a motor or not a motor? Is it a fish house versus trailer, and try to simplify it. Um, so that's where you'll see in, in section eight, B, one and two, some language in there that's motorized, and then this is where we'll talk about what Councilmember Gordon is bringing up. Motorized vehicles need to be on an improved surface. Um, non-motorized vehicles, so that'd be the trailers, um, and such, need to be on an improved. That was what currently we have. So, if council desires to allow it during certain time periods to allow it on the grass, but this is where we would probably add that in, amend this.
I'd be okay with the, like, you know.
During winter months.
During winter months.
I could care less if you got a trailer and it's got no gas or oil on it. It's your grass you're killing, it ain't mine.
Right.
I mean, that's just the way I look at it. I mean, I understand the, the, I understand motor vehicles, send it, something that has fuel in it, oil in it. I understand that completely. We don't have any choice in that matter. But I think a trailer, somebody parks in their grass, that's their grass, not mine.
But I, the only thing I'd be worried about is once that snow melts, they need to get that trailer out of there. Otherwise, I, who cares?
Are we gonna say the same dates as the snow?
The parking ban?
Right, which is November first, I think it's March thirty-first.
I think that's plenty of time.
Saying if there's snow or not snow, because that becomes a little bit more difficult. If there is, oh, there's a dusting, I'm thinking for co-enforcement.
Right, right.
Enforce if there was a, well, there is a dusting, so that counts. It'd be a little bit better, probably matched.
I think November to March would be great.
Yeah.
Tra- trailer.
Non-motorized.
Non-motorized.
And these are categories, we don't say it's not trailer versus a fish house versus whatever, it's just non.
Non-motorized, yep.
I simplified it a little bit with that.
Yeah, I like how you simplified it versus what it used to be.
What, 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 what could you park there that's non-motorized, that's not on wheels?
A trailer?
Trailer's on wheels. I'm just saying, why, why can't you just say trailer? Or, you know, but, you know, I mean.
Non-motorized trailer, like, you could have a boat on a trailer, which is motorized, but it's a trailer. So, a non-motorized trailer.
So, non-motorized should be no boats with motors, no vehicles.
Exactly, yeah.
No cars with engines, you know, anything that has fuel or oil in it, no. We can't, and it's not our choice.
So, you park a car there as long as you don't have the engine in it? Is that what we're saying?
That's why you went to a non-motorized trailer.
Non-motorized vehicle.
No, there. Wanted to get technical. Have you had a shell of a car because you were redoing a classic car?
I could just say that, park it there.
From November to March?
Yeah.
Sure.
I think co-enforcement maybe, I mean, would that be typical to have a non, a non-motorized motor vehicle?
Well, when you're Councilman Collison, you seem to buy all these vehicles, and, you know, he might do that.
I'm looking, looking to see where people are gonna use loopholes.
Yeah.
People that have, you know, six, seven cars already in their driveway. And, you know.
No, that one don't have a motor.
Technically, no, I think a vehicle.
Parked it on the grass.
Technically, I think a vehicle, uh, we have to look at the definition. If, if the vehicle is a motorized vehicle, whether it has a motor or not, may be viewed because it's technically a motor vehicle by definition, not necessarily that it has.
So, let's say a snowmobile trailer that's sitting on the trailer, so that would not be allowed still then?
Yeah, COVID.
I meant, we can't do anything about?
If it's enclosed, we kinda know there's snowballs in there, are we?
I missed what was asked. I missed what was asked.
Let's say if they got snowmobiles on a trailer, even though the trailer's not motorized, and there's nothing's gonna leak through there, obviously, it's gonna be.
A snowmobile's got a motor.
Oh, right, that's what I'm saying. So, the trailer doesn't, but the snowmobile does, it's sitting on top of it.
Right, so you say non, non-motorized, so the snowmobile can't be on a trailer. The trailer could, but not snowmobile.
I mean, we could, there's so much to, just this minor change, like you're saying. We could talk about it for an hour.
May I say something?
Yeah.
Um, so we do have something here that says road legal, and it's current license in operable condition such that a vehicle can legally be operated on any public, state, county or highway. So, if you had a vehicle that doesn't have an engine or whatever, that would be considered a junk vehicle. We wouldn't allow that to be stored.
There you go. She's halting you right there.
From the previous ordinance, I think that's wholly true for your amendment, so that would kinda take care of that one. Or up on blocks, or missing wheels.
She just closed that loophole on you.
True for lack in time. I mean, I do also wanna, if we can discuss that further, I do wanna also briefly discuss the gross vehicle weight. If we wanna keep that at fifteen thousand, would we like this to come back to Cal next month, just to dive in a little bit deeper when we have more time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's move on then.
Jimmy brought up a good point. The snowmobiles on a trailer, you bring up a good point. That's pretty popular for people to have them sitting on the trailer in the winter.
Yeah, right.
I could look into it further to say.
And I mean, that's not gonna, I mean, most of those trailers are wood, right? Cause otherwise, I mean, they have to be able to drive up on them. I don't have snowmobiles, so I don't.
We'll, we'll bring it back, guys.
It's not gonna leak through the wood on the trailer to, you know, so.
I, I hear what you're saying.
I just wanna make it easier for people to be able to get the stuff in, and when the winter months are keeping them off the roads, so.
I'm gonna let Chief Myers talk about this a little bit.
All right, Mayor, Council. Wanted to bring this for discussion without any edits on our behalf, just cause I wanna see what the council ideas. If you look at chapter two seventy, where it's prohibited, it's prohibited on private property, public property, public sidewalk, walkway, or travel portion of roadway. Therefore, where can you operate? You can't operate in the city of Isani, according to our ordinance. You go down to operation restrictions, it gives you twenty miles an hour, so now it's talking about. So, the only place in theory you could operate is private property with permission. So, that's kinda the piece of discussion that I wanna get from you to see, how can we clean it up to have it for the direction that you want? Cause on the prohibited use, there really isn't any place, you know, a snowmobile operating down, uh, city street is not, not allowed. You can operate in trunk highway, because that's a trunk highway in the county roads, that would be allowable uses in our city right now. So, does the council wanna allow? I, I did ta- reach out to, uh, Cambridge snow drifters just to see what their thoughts were. Yeah, interesting enough, I mean, in my conversation with them was, they were aware that you couldn't operate a snowmobile within the city of Isani, on the city roads or outside the county, which would be whiskey and, uh, highway sixty-five. Really can't operate on County Road five, even though it's County Road, because of the sidewalks and how it's actually laid out. So, they, they're interested. They know you can't operate, they, they'd like to at least see the operations, so you could operate to and from a trail system, cause that's their, their goal.
That's the way it used to be.
It could have been, but if you look at those prohibited uses, you can't.
You have to, you, I remember it being, you know, this was right around probably the time I got on council, if not before. You had to take the most direct route from your home to the nearest trail, um, and you couldn't go away from that.
And there's a lot of city ordinances that do reference that. I think, um, North Branch references that, Lionel Lakes referenced that, that you can go to and from. Cause in reality, the city of Isani isn't really a recreational snowmobile city. It doesn't really have, it's not, you know, you don't want the recreational trail rides through the city, but it does make sense if you want your residents to be able to operate out to highway sixty-five to go catch a trail corridor, hit, hit the trails. So, anyway. So anyway, if, if that's the, the direction, we need to address the ordinance so that we can actually allow that.
But they would have to stay on the road.
Correct.
The, the complaints, and I've got multiple ones, that people are coming from sixty-five down, um, South Passage to Railroad.
Yeah.
Because they wanna go, they wanna go to the V F W, but right now, it's not prohibited.
Well, when did this, I don't remember when I'll, I remember back then, the only road that was prohibited was County Road five and Main Street through town. All the other streets coming in from sixty-five.
I see snowmobiles going down Main Street all the time.
Yeah, I hear that. I could care less, either way. It's not, I, if you were, if you were out, go out and write tickets out for snowmobiles, you'd be writing out U T Vs. You'd be writing out tickets all day long.
Yep.
Cause everybody drives those U T Vs around town like it's their car.
As long as they're obeying all traffic laws, who cares?
Language.
I think as far as I'm concerned, to and from trails, that sounds fine to me. I don't know about the rest of you.
I'd say let them go anywhere, I don't care.
Yeah.
I don't care either.
I don't care either.
And I think the other bigger piece is we're gonna have to eliminate the upon travel portion of the right, the public right of way. And use some language that talks about the near or right-hand side of the roadway. Cause I mean, that's, in reality, the only place, most of these places you can operate is gonna be on our roads.
Yeah.
Now, from a public work standpoint, you know, I mean, the carbides running across our road surface, is that a concern to, in studs too? I mean, that's the other concern that might come up. Is there a, a impact on that infrastructure?
Actually, I think studs are illegal on trail systems.
No, they're not, but you have to have a special permit for them.
You have to get a special permit, most people aren't gonna go get it.
And that, and that money goes towards future repairs on the trails.
Yeah.
Even though they're not allowed to be on asphalt trails, period, but.
But we're gonna allow them on our roads?
That's prob.
If, if you're gonna allow them in the city, you have to allow them on the roads. I mean, that's kind of.
Cause you don't want them going through your front yard, so small your front yard is, is like my yard, your roadside frontage.
Kinda large, actually.
Then they go, well, not when you got a snowmobile coming in, you know, through your front yard.
They just come down Main Street, though.
And ninety-nine percent of our complaints are that, so.
They go down your driveway embankment and up the other side and then pretty soon you got a big pile of snow there. That's why I'd say keep them on the edge of the street and out of the yards, if they're going from point A to the closest trail connection.
I don't even care.
You know, a lot of people.
I don't want them going through my yard, that's why you, you.
I snowmobile, but I sure don't want them riding through my yard and.
I agree, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, I, I don't want them in my yard, but if, if they're gonna be on the street, let them be on the street, just make sure they obey all traffic laws.
Right. And it's not.
And that's that.
Most snowmobilers do not wanna spend much time on the street, cause it, it destroys their sled and it's hard to steer. So it's really, it's direct shots you wanna take, um, you're not gonna be doing laps around the block on the road with your snowmobile, it's just, it's hard to do.
You know what, fuck you. You don't even know anything, like, you're a piece of shit, that's what you are.
What? Okay. Who's that?
Someone returned your meeting? I just needed them, they just came on.
As far as I'm concerned.
So the to and from trail and roadway, that would probably be the bigger change that we'd throw on, the other stuff's actually nice. I mean, the twenty miles an hour that we have in there makes sense.
We need the don.
We don't want people ripping through town if.
We need the Donald.
Outside of the trunk highway.
The Donald.
What'd he say, you're a donut eater? Is that what he said?
Yeah.
Guess he knows you, chief.
You know why? Cause they taste good, so.
Okay, I think we have enough direction on that and we'll go to our last item. And, um, Ms. Garby is on, on here.
We're going to E five, the discussion of the Isani Community Center phone. Ms. Garby.
Good evening, can everyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just checking first. Alright, Mayor and Council, um, tonight I have on the Cal agenda, discussion on the Isani Community Center phone. There's a phone in the kitchen, um, that is located on the wall, um, in the back kitchen area. This phone is used primarily for the senior dining program, which is run by Catholic charities. And that phone number for that is advertised through their organization through various means. They advertise it in some formats that people can call into this phone number Monday through Friday from ten thirty to one thirty. However, the phone will ring at any time, um, day or night. And it will ring when other people are renting the facility. And we have received, um, a few complaints, um, from renters that the phone is, is ringing. The phone line does, um, have to remain for the fire, the, excuse me, for the fire system, um, but it doesn't need to ring out via phone. With advanced technology and cell phones, this would be an alternative, alternative for Catholic charities to have for their needs. The needs of the facility really do not warrant a public phone for use, kind of with what the new technology is now with cell phones, pretty much the majority of people have cell phones. The public phone, um, does, if the public phone does stay, Catholic charities is requesting to place a phone in the kitchen with an answering machine. Um, this would not eliminate the phone ringing during any renters events. This would only allow their staff to get the messages from their actual users. And so another alternative option would be, is that they would have their, the users call into a central line to Catholic charity's phone number. And then they could relay the message, or that Catholic charities would purchase a cellphone for their own staff to use, um, at that location.
I guess that's a better bet.
Um, current, currently, the monthly cost is about fifty-two dollars a month for us to have that phone line at the community center. So they're just requesting how you'd like us to kind of further, um, move forward with that option in the community center.
For emergency reasons, uh, Chief, do you have any thing to say about that?
Not necessarily, I mean, in today's society, I would say the majority of our nine-one-one calls from residents in this town are from cell phones. Because the majority of the houses do not have landlines. It sounds like a great idea, but in practicality, everybody in that community center is gonna have a phone. It's very uncommon for people not to, so.
Right.
You know, five years ago, I'd say absolutely not, that there's a public safety concern with that. Um, but just the way we are now, I don't see public safety concern with that, because everybody does have a cellphone.
I think we should be able to just take it out of there.
And recommend that Catholic charities get a cellphone to answer.
I concur.
Ms. Garby, can I, Paul Burgley? Can that phone be, can the, can the ringer be turned on and off?
The ringer itself, I would imagine, I don't know a hundred percent, but I mean, most phones you can turn it on and off. It then would be, but then the big question is, is that they're missing calls and so that's where then, they're only in there now a very limited time, only on Monday, so they're missing calls.
So here's what I do with my line, just as an option. I, I have a landline and we forward the, we forward the landline to my cellphone after hours so that we don't miss calls as well. So I can answer my clinic phone pretty much anytime I want. So call forwarding might save some of that.
But that really doesn't do anything for the cost that we have that there for one particular group.
Or, or if there's a renter in there and they don't forward it, then they're not gonna know it. So I, I, I think, I think personally let Catholic charities pay for their own phone and let's eliminate it.
I mean, I'm assuming that this is the number that people have for them though when they call, right? I mean, can we, can we eliminate it and make sure that they are able to transfer that number to their cellphone, so that they still have the same number? Then I think we should get rid of it. There's no reason we need that phone.
I agree.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Garby.
Okay, thank you.
Real quickly, in the next two seconds, goal setting, um, meetings, typically we've done them the last couple of years on a Monday night at six P M. I was thinking that perhaps.
It's Paul.
It's Paul, he just walked in the room.
I was thinking that perhaps, um, we do that within our Cal meeting in January. Our Cal meeting will be short and then we'll go, it will be its own meeting, but it would be within that Cal time frame. Is everyone okay with that? So we're having a separate day and evening for the meeting?
Yep.
Yep.
I just can't do it during the day anymore.
If we do, we can always, um, table items for later discussion at Cal, which is exactly what we did this last year. So, are we okay with that?
Yep.
Sounds good. It had to be Tuesday.
With Cal.
With Cal.
Okay, Jeff, if you wanna.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundine and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Therefore, uh, it, it passes five zero, therefore we stand adjourned.